We're ready.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the August 23rd, 2023 meeting, regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have two public hearings this evening, one involving amending our zoning ordinances. The second one's about Plainhampton East Corridor area. Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Present.
Fear. Vaughn?
Present.
Ryan?
Here.
Nab?
Present.
Lauer?
Present.
Moller?
Present.
We have a quorum.
I'll set the motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to council.
So moved.
Second. Let's remove the councilmember Pullman, secondly Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, she is excused from this meeting. I'm going to start off by offering a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're ready. Almighty God, please protect our first responders and our military who protect us, help us to make good decisions this evening, keep our young people safe going to and from school as school is started again. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a very special, special presentation this evening. And the first one is Home and Garden Awards, Dan Coons.
Good evening. Hi, Mike Peters.
Good evening, Anne. I think we all know you, but you have this great program for Home and Garden Awards. Is that correct?
Right, still.
Well, we hope it goes on for many, many years because what you do is you help us all become more inspired to make our homes look better, and it does work. And you recognize, you pick out these houses yourself, is that correct? And you picked out this one right here?
Yeah, this is Mike and his house at 3351 Freeman.
Okay. Now, these are pictures that you took or Mike took?
I took.
You took?
Yep.
That house looks, looks beautiful. Tell us a little bit about it. What did you see in the house?
Well, I just saw baskets, you know, in front here and in front here and over here and this, you know. What?
It's that thing that looks like this.
Trellis.
Trellis! I didn't say trellis. Townsman Nab wins $50 because he said trellis. What is trellis?
So he lives alone, right?
Yes.
And he's the worker.
Tell us about your, tell us about what you've got there.
What do, what do I have there?
Tell us, tell us.
Well, I mean, I, I am, I am proud of it and I, I'm honored to get this award from the city that I love, but I enjoy working in my yard, so it's not a big deal. I just enjoy planting flowers and keeping it up.
Well, Mike, it is a big deal, and I know I've seen you around in various city events and all, and, and thank you for making your home and Linda Wall appearances great. So this is an appearance award. This is right by the Mike Peters, 3351 Freeman Avenue. This is where I awarded this certificate of appreciation for receiving the August 2023 Home and Garden Appearance Award and for dedication to keeping the city of Hamilton beautiful. And that is a beautiful home. Thank you for taking so good care of it. All right? And you get a bottle of Hamilton water. Cheers. Thank you, Anne. Thanks for your help again. You're, you're an angel for your, you're an angel for us.
Want all of you people who are here with us tonight?
You know, Mike, I signed one of these too. So you've got one they got from Anne, this is for you. Mike Peters, certificate of recognition for receiving this award, and myself, and all members of council. So Mike, thank you very much. Two awards and a bottle of water. All right.
What I was going to share, if you're, if you see Anne driving by your house taking pictures, this is what she does and comes back to council meetings and shares how, how pretty some of the homes and the florals and the trees and things like that are. So use it, when she drives by, you can wave and, and know that she's doing good stuff in our city.
Okay. Next, our next special presentation is 2022, our audit, city audit, reported by Kerry Rowe of Clark Schaefer in Hackett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of councils, thank you again for the opportunity to come and discuss the city's 2022 financial and compliance audit with you. Appreciate this opportunity. First of all, I just want to let you know the status of the audit. It was completed in June. It was submitted to the auditor state's office as required by their regulations. They have accepted the report. It is now a public document and the audit is complete. From a high level, I want to talk about the reports that we issued related to the city's financial statements and compliance. First and foremost, the primary purpose of our audit was to express an opinion on your 2022 financial statements. Our opinion on those financials is they're fairly presented in all material respect and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is what we would call an unmodified or clean audit opinion, exactly what you would be hoping for. The city has also submitted their annual financial statements to the Governance Finance Officers Association for their award program for excellence in financial reporting. We believe the city will once again receive that award as they have for the number of years, so, you know, exactly what you would hope for from that standpoint. You know, as part of our audit, our professional standards require a couple of different things. We're required to evaluate the city's internal controls over financial reporting and also test your compliance with laws and regulations that could materially impact your financial statements. I'm very pleased to say that we did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls that were required to be reported. We also did not find any instance of noncompliance with laws or regulations that were required to be reported as well, so that report was standard. And then finally, we do have a third report we issue. This solely relates to the federal dollars the city receives. As you all know, the city receives significant federal grants. Those come with some strings attached. It's compliance audit, so we conducted an audit of those programs. Once again, pleased to say we did not find any weaknesses in internal controls, nor did we find any noncompliance with those federal regulations. So again, that report was the standard, unmodified report. Just a couple of other brief comments. Received excellent cooperation from everyone at the city during our audit. Very pleased to say we had no disagreements with management during the course of the audit, and our, our standards really define those as accounting auditing or reporting matters. I know that's a very quick snapshot of a lot of audit work as well as a lot of work by city staff, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, Kerry, we believe we are good stewards of federal and state dollars that come our way, and I'm definitely proud of Dave Jones and our finance team because we've won this triple crown for I don't know how long, but we've done a good, how many years?
Yeah.
And that makes us, that makes us champions. That's great. I heard you're a Reds fan.
I'm sorry?
Are you a Reds fan?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
I understand you're on some commercials.
Oh, heard me on the radio. Yes.
Well, hopefully they'll be champions too, but that's great. Word to word clean, that's the word I look for, that's the word that I think we all look for is a clean audit. And we've got a good relationship with you, sending all the documents to you, but we like to hear your report every year, and that it's clean. Any questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have SELF, AmeriCorps, volunteers. Johnny, come on up here. First, show us your, 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 show us the show.
Have to do the commercial first. So thank you very much for letting me be here again. As most of you know, SELF is sports to encourage low-income families, and we are the community action agency for, all right, if I can make this work. Be good if I turned it on. And basically, our organization is, is the community action agency for Butler County. So we do a lot of different things, and these are just a few of them we do. And what we try and do is find out what is necessary to help low-income families become, achieve and sustain self-sufficiency. And so these are some of the programs, like our Jobs Now program, help people get jobs, a micro enterprise program where we help low-income families start businesses in the town. We do a lot of emergency heat management for people who have their heat turned off in the wintertime. And then, and this is, you know, she sent you the wrong one, so I'll wing it. I, I actually, yeah, it's, it's a different than the one we're going to pass out to you. This is not the same slideshow. But basically, I'm in charge of the three different construction programs that we have. One is called Neighbors Who Care Home Repair, and that's the one we're going to talk about a little bit today. I'm really blessed to be here with some of our key volunteers. This is AmeriCorps, NCCC, and they'll be up here to talk to you in a minute, to tell you a little bit about what they do. Our Neighbors Who Care Home Repair Program, we did 167 homes in Butler County last year. Thirty to forty of them were in the city of Hamilton. And what we try and do is, is just help people stay in their homes. The program is designed mainly to help the elderly and disabled and add a, and we look at people who are making 50% of the average mean income. So that's a very low threshold, but a lot of these folks want to stay in their homes. They don't have the ability to pay for the repairs, and we actually help them with building code violations and do whatever we can do to help them stay safely in their homes. The other things, and some of these pictures are some of the different things we do. The second program we do is the Build Up Academy, and where we teach construction skills. We are currently partnering with Marshall High School, their program, and teaching these kids construction skills. And I'm proud to announce that we did our first program with the Juvenile Detention Center here in Butler County. And I'm really excited about having these young folks get an opportunity to understand there is life after they get out of there, and when they get out of there, we'll help them find a job in the construction field. And then the other program we do is our renovations program, where we take houses and, in the past, the city of Hamilton actually gave us a house that was scheduled to be torn down, and we were able to convert it into a livable house. These are the two we're working on currently, and then we just bought another one on Parish Avenue, which we'll be fixing up and selling to a first-time low-income home buyer. And we make them homeowners, we get an asset under their belt. We've done eight homes, we've closed on eight homes, and knock wood, every one of them still in there, making their payments and are happy taxpayers. And, and we have, these other three we're working on now, so, and these young folks have actually worked quite a bit on some of our renovation homes too. You can get involved, again, I'm not used to the slide, but we take volunteers all day. Last year, we had 1,000 volunteers give us 10,000 hours of their time. And these young folks from AmeriCorps, the NCCC team, they've been with us for, they will have, be with us for eight weeks. They have two more weeks to go, and so they have given us between 1,400 and 1,600 hours of their time to help the elderly and disabled families in Butler County. So there's a lot more I could say, and they're on the slide, but I'll, I think I'll leave it up to Pat and the young folks here to tell you a little bit about their story.
Great. Come on up here, John. And, and by the way, you can see, we brought them right from the worksite, so they're not pretty right now, but yeah, yeah, they've been working hard. A little sweat, a little paint, never hurt anybody. First off, I want to say thanks to SELF because you're keeping people in their homes, owner occupied, and for, you know, they're in, they just need a few renovations, they can stay there healthy and, and that's great. Keeps people, keeps people where they should be, in their, in their home. But I also am extremely happy about the program at the Juvenile Detention Center and the Rehab Center because they're just sitting there. They could be learning a construction trade, they could be getting possibly, working their way towards a certification that they, when they get out, get out of high school, they can pretty much start working or be proudly completing the program. But, okay, which one of you is the leader here? Green shirt. Okay, tell us what you've been doing here. Introduce yourself first.
Hi, everyone. We are with the AmeriCorps NCCC team. My name is Spencer Jamison. I am the team leader. I'm from Connecticut.
Hello, I am Ciara. I am a core member, and I am from Las Vegas, Nevada.
Hello, my name is Nadu, and I'm also a core member, and I'm from Erie, Pennsylvania.
Core member also, or core member, my name is Jonathan Lopez. I am from California.
Well, first off, welcome. To Hamilton and Butler County, and I don't. All right, John, tell us where these folks have worked and kind of what they've been doing.
Yeah, they've worked on some of our home renovation, excuse me, our home repair programs. They've actually worked on a couple of ramps, wheelchair ramps that we're putting out there, and they've done some painting. The other thing that, it was a blessing to have them, they came right after we did our group work camp this year, which we're glad to say now we have the young people coming back to town after COVID. So now they're back out there volunteering, and these guys did a lot of the cleanup afterwards and finishing up jobs that those guys couldn't do or didn't have time to finish. So that's great. The other thing they've done is they were housing them in one of our renovation houses, which we'll turn around and sell pretty quickly. They're doing the repairs on these renovation homes also. And then the other thing we try and do is we try and give them a little education every week, just a little bit of something. All, all of these guys are going to get Anosha 10 certification, and they're, they're actually learning while they go through all this stuff.
All right, I'm going to ask you all the same question. I'm going to start with the leader. You've been in this area for a little while. What do you like most about Hamilton and Butler County? And you're first, Spencer. Show your leadership. Tell us.
For me personally, I've always enjoyed parks and finding green spaces, and there's been plenty in Middletown where we're staying at. For, for me personally, there's a cemetery right near where we live, and that is certainly not the, the most traditional place to go for a walk, but it has been really nice to find that, that space for some introspection. So that, that's been for me a, a nice place in Butler County.
Good, good. So you're here next. Tell us what, what comes to your mind when you think about the fact we've been here in Butler County for a while.
Well, in my spare time, I have been volunteering at the Hamilton Lane Library, just like down the street down over there, with helping out with their art program for their kids. And I love spending like my Tuesdays there, covered in like different colors of paint and different crafts and hot glue guns, and it's so fun to see what these little young minds come up with, which, which, which yesterday, yesterday was Tuesday, yesterday they had some very interesting crafts. One, one came up like this entire body of armor, and I love hanging out with all the kids around here and getting to know the community through them and through their eyes, which is always fun to see different perspectives, yes.
That's great. Thank you, Sierra.
I think since working with SELF, I like working with the clients that we've been working with. They're very nice, the people here are very kind, and like every time we go to their house, they're very like appreciative of what we do, and they even offer us food, water, and I really love the community here. And also, for me personally, I feel like the city is very calm, so maybe it's different from to other people, but I like, like the nature and like how the community is, like I could just stay outside and just do my own thing, and it's very nice.
Going off Nadu as well, just the people, very nice, very kind, just love working here, you know, just basically the same as Nadu. So we went to a client's house and we painted her ramp. She's Hispanic, I'm the only Hispanic on the team, so I got to communicate with her and translate certain things that, you know, she said that she appreciated with John or Casey, or which is one of the SELF employees that we work with. And yeah, just being able to communicate with her, she gave us food after we worked, water, yeah, very nice client.
Definitely, you all, you can come back anytime you want. You can live, you can walk in Marshall University, you can keep a Lane Public Library. I'm not kidding, I mean, this is a great place to live, and you kind of made me smile about your reflections, and it's just so cool.
Of course, of course. So AmeriCorps, if you haven't heard of it, is a federal program, right? And they focus on helping different communities throughout the United States. And so my team and I, we've currently been with AmeriCorps. It's a 10-month program, we're almost halfway through, actually, no, we're past, we're a little bit more than half, passed halfway through, and during this time, we've been working on a variety of different projects across the country. Like during my first project, I worked with an environmental nonprofit that focused on educating youth in middle and high school about native trees and invasive species, and also distributing those trees for free across the United States. We've done work with like summer camps as well, rooting invasive species. You've done work on indigenous lands, right? Building cabins, I believe, cabins, I believe? Yes. We all, we come from all over the state and they, all over the country, excuse me. And they send us out to all these different states within our region and to address the needs of the communities in the way that the community sees fit. And yes, as well, yes.
All right. Here's your only test question. Who's got the world's best tasting municipal water? Think before you answer for just a second. Who's got the world's best tasting municipal water?
Hamilton.
You're going to wait prizes each one of you get a bottle of water. Spencer? Sierra?
Thank you so much. I will treasure this.
Nadu. And you're John? Great team, John Post. How about a round of applause for these volunteers? Good luck all, take care. Who knew?
It's the second time I saw that presentation. It's great, every time. Lucky to be on the SELF board, so I'm on the board, and they do a lot of great things.
Yes, they do.
They really do.
Okay. We're not going to have an engineering product, projects update, but we are going to go run into the audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda or speak at the time when it's up for a vote on council floor. All individuals are required to sign this, this blue public speaking book, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. And we've got one, maybe two individuals, one for sure. John Bauer is John here. So I'm going to come out to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is John Bauer, B-A-U-E-R. I live at 1101 Westview Avenue on the west side of Hamilton. It's just right off of Ohio, off of Millville, down Ohio, right at the end of Ohio. Real nice, lovely home. We purchased a couple of years ago. We've lived in, me and the wife, lived in Hamilton for years.
All my life.
All our life, you know, but we, we lived over on Glen Cross for Avenue, 272 Glen Cross, which is, is right next door to an apartment building, then we had a house on the other side, real nice area over there. We got a camper. Basically, we never had no problems over there with our camper, kept it in the driveway, it's like three feet from the sidewalk all the time. This place we have, we have 1.2 acres of property, and recently, we got a letter from the zoning department, I believe it was. I talked with one of the councilmen, I think it was, I thought it was Jim or Tim.
That'd be me, Mr. Bauer.
Yeah.
Go ahead and get your story.
Yeah. Anyway, what, what, I got in a letter in the mail and a picture of my camper. I have a long driveway, very long driveway, you know, nice house, like I said. No, no junk in the, around the house and all that, it's all, it's nice, you know, we take care of it. You know, it's 200 something thousand dollar home. But anyway, you know, we got this letter on the camper and that we, that we can't keep our camper in the driveway. And I spoke with, is it Jim or Tim?
Tim.
Tim, yeah, okay, I spoke with Tim. I spoke with AJ from the zoning, I believe it is, and a couple of other folks up there. And they had went around and around, and the last I, I, I heard AJ call me back a couple of days ago, I think it was April, yesterday. And he told me, he says, you don't have to worry about it right now, we're looking at re, he said, we're not going to do anything, we're not going to pursue anything further at this time. He said, we're looking at redoing the ordinance. So, you know, they say, they say your camper can only be 25 foot long. My camper's like 30, 31 foot long, something like that. So I, you know, I'm, I'm asking for the council to join in with the, with, you know, the zoning department and re, relook at this issue to change the length or whatever, or, you know.
The reason me and John even have a camper is we have taken in foster kids, and we take them on vacation, you know, I mean, a hotel is $300 a night. Take them camping out of Houston Woods, you know, stuff like that. And my mother-in-law, she's elderly, we keep hers, she lives with us, and we just, I don't want it tore up. I don't want to put it somewhere where it's going to get tore up. I hate to say, I've been here all my life, I've never seen ten living, never seen the homeless like it, like it is, and I, I don't want it getting broke into and destroyed and, you know, I have my own sister that's out on the street on drugs and.
Well, I know, I know you're good people, and I thank you for living in Hamilton. I do know this about this situation. I know Tim may want to comment more, but our planning department's being a resource, they're being a resource, they're also being resourceful. I mean, I don't know many other cities that would look into what other cities do and say, hey, maybe we can make ours better. Maybe we can just tweak it here or there. But the fact that AJ gave you a call back and said, hey, we're looking into some things, I mean, that's, that's being resourceful. I think it's the kind of city, the city, the planning department and the city administration that you want to have, that they'll look at something and just not rip or stamp and say, wrong. Tim, you want to say a favor?
I took a ride by your home, Mr. and Mrs. Bauer, as I shared with you on the phone, John, and you do have a beautiful home, thank you. It is set way back from the street. The driveway is, is quite long, perhaps 75 feet long. And, and, and again, where the, the camper is situated right now, it's certainly not a detriment to the neighborhood, but again, our, our current zoning law is called for the 25-foot max. So with tongue and the, the, I'll call it the component of the forward part of the camper, maybe just 30 or 30, 31 feet. When AJ shared with you yesterday, and then we were advised today, we received a memo from the planning department on the opportunity, when we looked at other, we'll call them jurisdictions in the, in this area in southwest Ohio, that there might be a 30-foot or 31-foot tolerance. So that's why they extended the time into September for the due diligence part of what, of what we, the city are doing. We recognized, John, when you shared that you were taking a ride through your neighborhood yesterday and saw boats and other trailers and campers in motorhomes and people's driveways. Again, we don't want to be putting people under thumb in, in things, but because there was a formal complaint, the team looked into it, and now we can pivot a little bit to.
And so, and I understand, it takes time.
We take the grandkids. I mean, if it was me and him, I'd rather be in a hotel somewhere. Because when I sleep in that bed for a week or a weekend, I can hardly walk, so.
But let us, let us work on it. But again, you've got the commitment that, that we can do things and again, that's, that's what we're here for. So I'm glad you came to visit tonight, shared your story with everyone, and also the fact that you've got a wonderful home and what you're doing things.
We love it. I mean, the backyard, we get deer and I mean, it's like, they, every, our family says, we live in the country, in the city.
Let's see what the research and next steps take us, but thank you for.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, whole council.
Thanks for coming and being with us.
He wanted me to state, my name's Deborah Bauer.
Good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We're saying hello.
You also have a, a book that's been signed for one of our public hearings, but I'm not sure if it's for the public hearing or if it's for the audience of citizens. Is there a Mark Mysteri, am I named Mark here? I'll start with that. Is that you? He wished to speak during Audience of Citizens or during this public hearing involving Plan Hamilton?
No, I do not.
You're not want to, okay. All right. You did sign the book. I wonder if it's on the caucus agenda or something. Do you know what this might be on?
I would like to see if it doesn't matter if I could just explain what that meant.
Sounds like it could be Audience of Citizens. Okay, come on up to the podium. Give us your name and your address. This is part of Audience of Citizens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Masterson, M-A-S-T-E-R-S-O-N. I'm the president of Rapid Building Solutions and I'm also in-house counsel for the Your Storage Units Group of Companies. I was here presenting at the Planning Commission on August 3rd regarding our property on 64 Brookwood Avenue and the order that we received on the 17th relating to that meeting that occurred on August 3rd. Our group is, you know, appreciative of receiving that letter. And there's one clarification that's in that letter that I would like to have, you know, brought forth so that, you know, we can understand and put our heads around before I, you know, suggest that and persuade you, yes, we do, do want to move forward and get this planning order approved formally through the processes that be. I think there's a couple more hearings that are scheduled here through September. And that particular issue has to do with the requirement to seal and repave out parcels that are related to that property area. Now, those terms are not mutually exclusive. You know, if you talk to anybody who's in the civil site work business, they'll tell you it's either repave or reseal. It's not, it's, it's one or the other, it's not the same. And my, you know, request to the city is to clarify this order, that it's just seal and repair. Because that would make a lot more sense to, to what's going on, you know, and I think that's also what, you know, our group would be prepared to accept and to go forward with. I think that there's, if we were to repave the entire two outlots, which are two acres of, of, of land, the cost would be eight X the amount to, you know, just repair and to reseal. Now, these properties, I, I, like I said to the, to, you know, design board, are not related at all to the development that is, was in the application. They're merely parcels that are adjacent to it. They're also up for sale. And they're likely, and they could be owned by a separate owner at any point, you know, in the near future. So for those reasons, you know, we understand that there's a need to correct some pothole issues and we're on board with doing that. But the need to either repave, which is, I think, too extensive of a requirement for this particular design application, you know, is outside the need of, you know, what the city would need or to beautify the area. And just a repairing and resealing would be sufficient enough for, for the property going forward. And that's what I'm here to say today on the record.
Okay, that's agenda, caucus agenda item number three, recommendation relative to 64 North Brookwood Avenue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, we're going to have what's called a committee of the whole, and that's going to be like an open discussion a little bit with, with our planning department director. So hang around, we'll probably hear a few things about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of the audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports and caucus reports and our financial and investment report for July of 2023. Committee of the Whole, as I just said, mentioned, is an opportunity for city council to, to hear verbally some reports that are on the consent or caucus agenda and allow us to ask questions and comments and learn even more about those caucus agenda items. I'll set the motion to regular meeting, be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second, let's my councilmember nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. 6:37. And I'll go into that caucus agenda. You'll lead us through that, Mr. City Clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
For the first item on the caucus agenda, which relates to amending Part 19 of our Housing and Property Maintenance Code, we will have our Executive Director of External Services, Mr. Tom Vanderhorst.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name's Tom Vanderhorst. I'm the Executive Director of External Services. Have a short presentation, verbal presentation on caucus agenda item number one. This is for a change in Chapter 19 of the Housing and Property Maintenance Code. This might kind of sound vaguely familiar to council because in April of 2022, we split Chapter 17. Chapter 17 is the health code. The health code previously contained the property maintenance code as well. Those got split from Chapter 17 to Chapter 17 and 19. Chapter 17 is still the health code. Chapter 19 is the property maintenance code. So in Chapter 17, the health code, the person responsible for the administration of that ordinance is the health commissioner or the health director. Chapter 19, those duties were assigned to the external services director, myself, and this legislation is simply changing that to the city manager's office. So for the purpose of flexibility, it just allows that to be administered, maybe with resident services, police, health, whomever. So I think that provides a little bit more flexibility and that's the only change that's being asked of Chapter 19.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Next up for agenda items two and three, we will have Liz Hayden, our Director of the Planning Department.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. The first one is one you've seen before. It's a vacation of an alley and it's Skillman Alley shown on the map up there. And so far, we've had vocal support from all the neighbors that have bought it. Any questions?
Glad it's getting done. Thank you.
The next one, I have a bit of a longer presentation than normal, given the high-profile nature of the project. This is 64 North Brookwood Avenue. It is Hamilton West Shopping Center. Some people call it the Brookwood Shopping Center. And we have an applicant who spoke tonight who is proposing a preliminary and final plan development proposal for the site. It's actually for half the site, as you can see here. It is not for the, like, large vacant acreage site because it is now owned by two different ownership groups. So the, the group that's proposing the plan that you're seeing tonight only has control over this part of the shop, former shopping center. There, it's a specific use to allow self-storage and for variance requests. This is something we've seen before. We had a plan come through for self-storage for this site back in 2018. It's been almost exactly five years. And the main difference that you'll see is that at that time, it was one site and they were proposing more development than just the self-storage facility, although the, the outlots were conceptual, they were not committed to. This isn't a great visual, because it's such a big site, but this is the proposed elevation that the applicant has submitted for the, for the front face scene part of the project that faces Brookwood. The big pieces in my mind to share are that it is, they're planning on pretty much taking everything off and starting over again because of the poor construction and they're proposing more brick than what is there currently. And everything that they're propose, every material that they're proposing is some sort of masonry material, whether it's hardy plank or cement tile or brick. There's also, just as the plan was in 2018, it, there's a large drive door on the front, so there would be no outside loading or unloading people drive in to the front and circulate through to unload indoors. There's a lot, there were a lot of conditions and a lot of conversation. I wanted to try to highlight the, the ones that I thought were the most specific to this project. So these are images of the outlots. Staff had originally, as part of the process, working with the applicant, had actually asked the applicant to rip out all of the asphalt in the outlots and return it to green space. And they asked for consideration not to do that. And then Planning Commission added this condition that you see up there. They did not require the ripping out, but they said you have to seal and repave prior to the approval of the building permit. And there is some vagueness there, but their, their goal that they had was basically to make sure that the outlots were in good condition because while they are, they are actively being marketed for sale through Bowling and Kucler, I believe. It's been, they've been sitting there, like, in the similar position for, since 2018. So that was why the stronger condition of requiring something before a building permit and it sounds like it would be something helpful if council could provide some guidance on what their preference would be between sealing and repaving or if there would be a different condition they would be interested in. Additionally, again, concern for the longevity of the outlots, the, there was a requirement that there should be a sidewalk installed on the outlots and also 10-foot of landscaping behind it on both outlots. And then Planning Commission added these following conditions as well. They requested more window transparency, going from 43% as proposed to 50%. And they stated that they, instead of giving the applicant two years, which is what the zoning ordinance would typically permit, they said that the applicant only had one year to get to a certificate of occupancy. And they reiterated their desire to see continued maintenance on the outlots. That's a requirement as a property owner, but just putting that in stone as a, as a condition of approval. There were four requested variances and you'll see those on the slide. Some of them, Planning Commission viewed as existing conditions on the site, site-specific, that the way the layout works, not being able to add a buffer in the rear, that kind of thing. But one variance they requested was to not do a rain garden. And the city, uh, planning staff worked with engineering and the engineering team said that it would be possible to do a rain garden. So the Planning Commission recommended not approving that waiver request. I do want to note, this is not a conditional use. This is a plan development zoning, which means that it automatically goes on to one, to two, two readings and a vote, not like conditional use where this is, you hear a presentation and if you concur with Planning Commission, you don't see it again, you'll see it two more times. Do you have any questions?
Any questions at this point in time? So we've got first reading with the public hearing on September 13th and the second reading with the vote of council on September 27th. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's time between now and then for us to further digest this, look at it, look at the conditions of approval. And I take, Planning Commission worked really hard on this one. It was, there was a lot of back and forth, it was a long hearing, and it brought us to where we are right now. And we'll see where this takes us. Mr. Mayor, please.
Liz, so between now and September 13th, what is Planning Commission doing, if anything, regarding this?
Nothing. They are done. They've made their recommendation to you all, so if you, but, but you, you're the final vote, so if you have conditions you want to add, change, anything, there's opportunity to do so.
So, and as of right now, it's not in compliance? Is that what I'm understanding, the variance?
There, there have been a series of resident services code violations out there. The, the condition of the, the parking lots as they are now are violations of the city code.
Okay. And if they were not finished by September the 13th, would council still have an opportunity to pass it? If, if they're not in compliance?
I don't believe that there's any plan to do anything until you vote on, make a decision on whether the self-storage facility can happen or not.
Okay.
So I think it will remain, we can, you know, my understanding is that they're waiting for guidance from you September 27th on how to proceed.
And I guess why is city council doing this and not Planning Commission?
Plan development zoning has more, it has more flexibility. It's appropriate for large acre sites, but it also therefore has more oversight and is more of what our legal counsel says is a legislative decision, so you vote on it. It's like a rezoning.
Okay. And then you said there was faulty construction. So is this building not able to be occupied right now?
It is definitely not able to be occupied right now.
And so by approving this, we would be approving a building that is not in compliance?
No, it would allow them to apply for building permits and get things on the right track.
Okay. And the property?
They'll need to redo things and start working with the building department.
But the property is for sale as is right now?
No, the applicant wants to own the self-storage facility, but there's two outlots that they want to sell. I'm sorry, that's not, that I didn't make that clear. So they would be the, my understanding is that they would be the long-term owner of the self-storage and golden dragon piece of the property and they're looking to sell the two vacant outlots that are like on either side of O'Reilly's.
Okay. Where the car wash was proposed and a, a restaurant.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Two and three. Sorry about that.
Okay. And could that happen?
Could they sell those?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, Councilperson Vaughn brings up some good questions. So if the property is currently in non-compliance, are we allowed to approve something of this nature?
Yes, it's my, I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting, but my understanding is that all these, a number of different conditions were put in place in effort to try to get certain things into compliance expeditiously.
What is the, what is the remedy if it's approved and a planned unit development and the, and what the conditions approved as a part of that PUD are not executed within the, the timeframe?
Then we would, we would go back and, and look at what the, the remedies are within the court system to prosecute, to deal with that issue.
And, and nothing against the gentleman in the crowd because I don't know them, but the former owner made a lot of promises five years ago and as you can see, just driving by and looking at the site, nothing has ever really been done with that. My concern is by approving a new PUD, does that give us less leverage in making sure what we thought was going to be done five years ago actually gets done faster?
I can't, I can't speak to whether, you know, I don't have a crystal ball with.
That appro-
Then we would we would go back and look at what the remedies are within the court system to prosecute to deal with that issue.
And nothing against the gentleman in the crowd because I don't know them, but the former owner made a lot of promises five years ago. And as you can see, just driving by and looking at the site, nothing has ever really been done with that. My concern is by approving a new PUD, does that give us less leverage in making sure what we thought was going to be done five years ago actually gets done faster?
I can't speak to whether, you know, I don't have a crystal ball with.
That approval expired. So anything moving forward needs a new plan development.
I know, but what I'm saying is a parking lot is not part of a PUD. If it's currently in non-compliance, it's a new it's a non-compliance if there's a PUD or not.
Right.
My my point, I think I'm trying to make is do we bring it into compliance before PUD is actually approved, the things that are not part of the planned unit development? I just maybe if I know we have some time before the next meeting, if we could just maybe examine that question a little bit closer.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Please, go ahead. The question I have really on this is I understand what you're trying to do with two and three up there is that you don't really want to repave it because if you sell it to somebody, they can develop that and repave it and put, you know, do what they have to do, especially if they're putting a building and curbs in there. Now, one of the biggest complaints I've had for years, for five years, and I actually know these people, is O'Reilly says the entrance to that has been it's been craters out there for years, and they said it costs them business because of this. Why would we? Why wouldn't we pave that road and pave your area and fix and repair two and three out there so that you could sell that? I understand that, but are you planning to pave that entrance road and pave? I mean, it needs to be paved, in my opinion. You're hurting the business. You didn't own this, okay? So I'd be the directest at you, but they were hurting the business with the potholes and everything that were there because they told me many a times that people don't come in there because it beats your car to death. And yeah.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, they were owners. They have been owners since 2018, but they were not the active owners. They were silent partners, so they've been involved since then.
Okay, I'm confused on all the ownership of it.
Yeah, they split partnerships. So, yeah, so, yeah.
Mark wants to say something.
Yeah. It is a condition of approval that they have to repave everything, like all of it, the stuff that are not in the outlaw.
But council could look at the two and three lot there and say, you know, they got to repave everything but two and three, and they could repair and reseal, not repay. But and I get what they're doing as investors, they're going to sit there and want to sell those lots, and there's going to be somebody come up and dig up brand-new pavement. Okay, I understand that, but we do have to make it look better. So your area where they're coming in, maybe we can make a conditional that they have to pave that entrance, pave around their area, you know, over to the China buffet or whatever that they have to do there. I'm not even going to ask right now about the other side, but I understand, as a businessperson, I understand what you're doing. You really don't want to put that money into it if somebody's going to dig it right back up. If you put like a fast food restaurant or something there, you don't want to but can you make it nice enough that that's not the traveled road right there is right there, but can we make it nice enough for the business that's already there? And I think we still have another business still coming in there. Is that is that the old Pizza Hut part of your business, your property?
No, sir. No, sir, no. But to your point, that is the plan, is to repair and to seal so that it looks nice and presentable. So but the order is has vagaries in it, and there's a difference between sealing and repaving. Because if you were to repave, you wouldn't seal. It's a complete layer of asphalt.
You're not going to seal till later on.
Well, no, you wouldn't at all.
Yeah, a couple of years down the road. Yeah, that's just a maintenance.
You know, so for clarity, I would like to have direction from, you know, because this is holding up. Our permit expired in February, and we've been paying holding costs since then.
And I understand, but I guess I want you to understand in the red area, I think that entrance there personally, I think, needs to be repaved. Okay? And I think it's it's in pretty bad shape still. It's been filled.
Well, I was just out there, and I've got pictures of it. That red area has all already been redone. That red, everything in that red box is all redone. There's no potholes there. There's the only potholes that exist are in areas two and three, two and three.
Redone, it's been repaired.
I mean.
I don't think it's been I don't think it's ever been repaid. I live right by there, so.
There's no potholes in any of that red area that you see on that on that on that schematic.
Well, I know they finally filled those, but I don't think it's ever been repaved. You don't feel it needs to be repaved?
I personally do not feel that it does. We're going to operate a business there, and I don't think that that area needs to be repaved. Now, there's a lot of other details that have been implemented into this development order that would improve the in that area. So I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about. Are you talking about this area right here?
I'm talking about the driveway into.
Or this driveway here?
No, I'm talking more of the one that's used the most, which is the one that where O'Reilly is. That's one that's been beat up for years. That's one that they complained to me about.
I think what O'Reilly's complaining about is the entranceway from this lot number three into their property, because this has a lot of potholes in it. I do not suggest that there's potholes here. I was just there today. I've got pictures of my phone to show you.
I'm the I used to own a repair business, used to go there all the time, and I just they would, you know, I'm just they would say, geez, city needs to do something. So I said, but it's not the city, but that's before I got on council. But I still have heard complaints from that, and that's where I was getting that. And I'll drive by to get and look at it. I mean, I buy it every day, so.
But that's part of this approval, and it's all part of it. And I would love to.
Just as we do, I encourage all of council, and I think you probably already have reviewed the conditions of approval, but review them again and go out and take a look at it in person. We all drive past it every day. So let's get the council, let's don't get out of the car. But we need to review the conditions of approval and maybe clearly understand what the definition is of seal and repave and some of these other words in here. But this was very well discussed at the Planning Commission, but we all need to take a look at the conditions of approval again. We've got some time to take a look at it and circulate questions. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Do you like in town, though? I'm sorry.
No, I flew in from Florida for this.
Okay. I'm sorry, because I'm.
I'll be in the next two as well.
I'm allowed to meet with you and look at that, so.
I'll be here after the meeting if you'd like to.
Glad you're glad you brought the. Mark, stay with us for just a minute, if you will. Susan, Eric, thanks for your questions. Thanks for everyone on council taking a look at this opportunity planned development. Do you own any other any other sites? Be careful of my words, because it can be a piece of or an entire an entire existing building. Do you own anything else like this for your company that you folks are national in scope or regional in scope?
Yes, we absolutely do.
Okay. In your opinion, because you'd like to reface it and fix the sins of yesterday to make it viable so you can put put people's things in there. And Liz had shared the schematic of what you wish to do. How long might that take, Mark? From from the point you start, I'll call it the reconstruction and refacing, how long of a process is that?
So are we talking about just the pavement or the whole building?
No, the building to reface it. Okay, go back. Let's forget about asphalt for right now. Okay? But to reface it and get and get the building viable, how long of a process?
Once I get a building permit, I'll get it done four months.
Okay.
For CO. Now, that's as long as I can get landscaping in when it whenever the temperature is acceptable because landscaping up here might not be.
No.
We've got extensive additional trees and bushes that we plan on putting throughout this this property. And I hope to not have to plant them in January.
Okay. Tell us too, because in the in the presentation, would the sidewalks be something that your company would do on that frontal property?
Yeah, that's part of this, exactly.
Okay, I too, because of where I reside, and many of us are kind of in that near area, I know that curb cut that you mentioned that used to service the Pizza Hut that's there. You pointed to it, Mark, off to the.
Lot number three.
Yeah, lot number three. Yeah.
That's a that's a vacant building.
Right, right. And that's going to become a gold star chili.
Oh, it is.
From what we're told. Okay? So that's in the works. Does, I'm being careful here, does your company own that that asphalt area that comes in from the street where Eric where Councilman Poeman mentioned there are a lot of potholes off near that building, near site three?
Our company only owns what's outlined here, both in blue, yellow, and red.
Gotcha.
And that's extended.
Okay. So the the asphalt surface that you'd call the driveway that that comes in and services building three, that's site number three?
That's outside of our property.
Okay, thank you, because that helps clarity for what we have to go through in these next couple of weeks and things.
This is the only entry that we own here and here. Right? Our development has extensive correction here, all a lot of additional landscaping throughout and refacing the entire building, putting paving all the way on the side of the building here to service the restaurant. And so that we don't need the restaurant to rely on any of these out parcels for parking.
I understand. Thank you.
And they'll be totally for sale.
Okay. One thing I would ask when I ask about your other businesses, wherever they may be, might you be able to supply, just a simple picture, from kind of like from Brookwood in toward the building? It shows us the integrity of what some of those business sites are that I had asked about.
Absolutely.
Cool, cool. It helps us when you said we flew in from Florida.
Just me.
Okay. But but importantly, then we have an idea as to the type of, if you will, landlord, the type of business that you have elsewhere. And we'll compare apples and the apples, hopefully. This is one that kind of fits the business model, that's helping your business grow and things like that.
Yeah, it's a it's a Class A self-storage facility. We these aren't our mom-and-pop lean-tos.
But thanks for coming here tonight.
For how long?
Well, tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay. Well, I can't make it tomorrow morning.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Can I ask Director Hayden one more question?
Please.
Is this now a one-owner of everything? So we're not dealing with multiple people and differences?
Right now, yes. So there would be another group at some point that would come in and submit a plan for the for the.
Outlots.
Well, not the well, yeah, the outlots will have to come back too. Yeah, because there isn't a plan for them. So they'll have to you'll you'll when they get sold, the new owner would come. But then the the area that was demolished has a different owner, and they would come in for a plan too.
Okay, that was my question. So of all the property, what's in red belongs to this owner?
Well.
Or red, blue, and yellow there?
Right.
Not the dirt where things were torn down?
Right.
So we're dealing with just one? And all of the asphalt that's in front of that building there is what we're talking about? That's it? Nothing down at that far end?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I think if I understand it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would be happy to meet on site or and the applicant said he's going to be here, you know, each meeting, so just let us know what you need and.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? This one's number three.
No.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, coming up on next up on the caucus agenda, agenda items number four and five will be presented by our senior civil engineer, Ms. Joy Rodenberg.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As part of our annual Ohio Public Works Commission funding program, this year, we are going to be applying for three loans, all for water main replacement projects. And the reason why we're applying for three separate projects is because this is a competitive process, and there's a limited amount of money available for our particular district. So we've broken up these projects into three sections, and we've prioritized them with Williams Avenue being our top priority. So in case they do run out of money, we'll we hopefully will at least be able to be awarded some of the some of the projects that we're that we're trying for. So the Williams Avenue project, our loan is going to be for $1,275,000. And all of these loans are 0% interest. This particular project, the existing pipe that we have in there is we've got two-inch steel, we have six-inch, eight-inch, and 18-inch cast iron pipe. The two-inch and the six-inch and eight-inch were installed in the early 1900s, and the 18-inch was installed in 1950s. And we've had several failures, water main breaks on these pipes. So we're going to be replacing these pipes with 1,000 feet of eight-inch ductile iron pipe and 1,300 feet of 16-inch ductile iron pipe. So let me go to the. There we go. It's a little bit difficult to see, but the project limits for this on Williams Avenue will be from River Road to Pleasant Avenue. The next application will be Van Buren Drive and Van Buren Court. This particular loan request will be for $692,000. Again, it's 0% interest. On these this section, we've got existing six-inch cast iron pipe, which was installed in 1939. Again, we've had multiple failures, and we're going to be replacing 2,300 feet with eight-inch ductile iron pipe. And this map, it will be all of Van Buren Drive, so it circles around, and then all of Van Buren Court. And then the last loan that we're going to submit is for Carlton Drive Water Main Replacement. This application will be for $306,000. Again, it's 0% interest. We've got existing six-inch high-density polyethylene pipe, which was installed in 2006. We're having multiple failures on this too, and we'll be putting in 1,020 feet of eight-inch ductile iron pipe. And then the map here goes from Hammond to Kenworth are the project limits for that. You have any questions on on our loan applications?
Thank you for the zero interest rate. That's good. But I saw 1939, that lasted almost 100 years.
Yes.
Then 2006 did not even last 20 years.
No, that's, yeah, the difference in our pipe material.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
And if awarded the grants, what was the timeline for doing the work? I'm sorry if I missed that.
There'll be loans, it's a loan application. The loans will be awarded if we get them July 1st of 2024.
Okay.
And then it usually takes us, we'll probably bid it then in the fall or winter and then do construction the following year. So it'll just be several months to do the the projects.
Okay, so maybe 18 months out, just so that people have a general idea that they're not expecting this to happen, you know, April 1st.
No, no. No, we can't we can't award any of the projects until the loan agreements are signed, which is July 1st of their annual program year.
Thank you.
And then this is our 2024, this is grant application for concrete repair and street resurfacing. Again, this is an annual program. Our grant request is for $1,120,000. We'll have a list here of the the streets that are under consideration. It'll be 2.7 centerline miles. This project involves several different funding sources. OPWC is one, the Street Levy Infrastructure Renewal, Stormwater, and then Special Assessments. These are, this is a little bit difficult to read as well. I don't know if I can, I'll leave it at this, but I do have a map of it. But we have Williams Avenue. The limits for that is from River Road to Pleasant Avenue. Fairview Avenue is River Road to Pleasant. Freeman Avenue is from Fairview to Williams Avenue, which that's the map for that, which is a little difficult to read. Then we have Walnut Street from MLK to East Avenue. Hanover Street from East Avenue to Erie and South 14th Street from Hanover to Erie. And then Hancock, we have from High Street to South Fair. And I believe that up there does say Maple, but it's actually South Fair. But this, that's the map of those projects, which gives you an idea. Then we'll be doing Van Buren Court and Van Buren Drive, which will be resurfaced right after we get our water main replacement project completed. Then finally, we have Rutledge Court and Holmes Court, which will be basically the whole the whole street. Rutledge Court will be from Taft Place to the cul-de-sac. Holmes. Holmes Court is, um, Taft Place, and then it'll be both, both sides of, um, both cul-de-sacs. Does anybody have any questions for the resurfacing?
Any questions? Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
That takes care of the caucus agenda. I'll accept the motion. That committee will be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to my Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:12. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion to my Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Regular meeting is reconvened at 7:12. I'll accept the motion regarding...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur them in their recommendations.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried also at 7:12. Now go into the public hearing section of the agenda. And I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion to my Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the first public hearing.
A public hearing regarding...
7:13, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending multiple sections related to the second round of tax amendments for the calendar year 2023.
Anyone on this should be heard at this public hearing involving multiple sections of the zoning ordinance? Anyone on council wish to be heard at this public hearing? Anyone on council wish to, uh, be heard? Motion regarding this particular public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. We now go into the second public hearing this evening.
A public hearing regarding a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, adding the East Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan to the plan, City of Hamilton applicant.
Anyone on this should be heard at this? Public hearing involving, uh, the East Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan? Anyone on this wish to be heard at this? Amendment to make Plan Hamilton involving the East Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan? Anyone on council wish to be heard and make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Second public hearing was, uh, concluded at 7:14. The first one was included at 7:13. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Second.
Second by my Councilmember Vaughn. Uh, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Regular meeting is reconvened at 7:15. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. Now, accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting. Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:15. We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance involving, uh, changing the zoning in the River View Second Ward neighborhood.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of specific properties in the River View Second Ward Neighborhood Zoning Map, changing the zoning on the area in question from a mixture of residential and commercial districts to TN Traditional Neighborhood and specific properties B2 Community Business, OPD Office Plan Development, and RPD Residential Plan Development, properties situated in the Second Ward, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
We now go to agenda item number nine, which is an emergency ordinance, second reading, involving a sanitary sewer impact fees and costs.
An emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending section 95, sorry, 931, excuse me, one more time, 935.10, there we go. Sanitary sewer main impact connection fee, cost, uh, participation, and system capacity charge to amend fee collection process, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Now go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving a community reinvestment area agreement.
An ordinance authorizing a real property tax abatement with the main high corridor community reinvestment area for the purpose of encouraging economic development within the area and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement with Vision AWH LLC, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
We go to agenda item number 11, second reading of an ordinance involving a tax increment financing agreement.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to a certain parcel of real property within the city to be a public, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.41, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a school compensation agreement with the Hamilton City School District, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a tax increment financing agreement, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan, I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to my Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
We go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving transfer of certain real property.
An ordinance approving the transfer of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, associated with the construction of the Butler County Regional Highway, State Route 129, between State Route 4, Erie Boulevard, and the East Corporation Limits, Lot Number 30108, 30109, 30110, 30105, 30106, 26381, 26377, 26376, 26375, 26374, 26373, 26372, 26112, part of lot number 25996, lot number 26113, part of lot number 26386, 26114, part of lot number 25996, lot number 26497, 26498, part of lot number 26386, part of lot number 25996, lot number 30111, part of lot number 29040, lot number 12658, part of lot number 12657, lot number 30112, part of lot number 24712, part of lot number 24712, part of lot number 28406, part of lot number 28406, lot number 24712, 30107, part of lot number 12655, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to my Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any questions or comments on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Maybe it's my ignorance, but can you explain who we're transferring to or from?
It's got to do with the, um, the ID.
I could try to answer that question if you answered it.
You answered it.
Uh, sure, so Councilmember Vaughn, this is a transfer of parcels from the Butler County Transportation Improvement District. This was related to the construction of State Route 129. So these, I believe these were acquired during that construction and they're being transferred back to us.
Okay, for maintenance reasons. This is the, the green space and, um, and the road, is that correct?
I'm not sure about that, answering that question.
It's okay, it, it's fine. I just didn't understand.
If, if I can remind everyone, we had talked about the, the street widening section, uh, that comes up to, um, the, the crossroad at Hampshire.
Uh-huh.
And I think that this might be, I read the same thing, Susan. I think this might be part of that activity to ensure that the land is city property rather than state and that it can be utilized then for those turn lanes that are going to be made for that Hampshire Drive intersection.
If there's to be a cleanup of something that we can possibly do, something positive with that property.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor, but this, this does not include, Daniel, this does not include the stairs, the, the steps going up there.
I wish Alan was here to answer that question.
Because I know in the TID, we talked about transferring that over since I'm on the TID. We talked about transferring the stairs over there and that Hamilton would be responsible for the maintenance of the, the stairs, the railings, all the grass and everything over there. But the TID is supposedly transf, and I'm just wondering if this is part of that transfer? Anybody know that question?
Or a map in the, a map of the area in the packet? I don't recall that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but it, I don't know if it gets down to that level of specificity in terms of steps, et cetera.
Yeah, I know we talked about it in the TID and that's something that I, I have not seen that transfer come over, but this sounds like a lot of the transfer of that property. And we are going to have maintenance, uh, we are going to have maintenance on it. I think we talked about it before, but we would be in, I, I think they just put a lot of maintenance into the railings and the steps over there. Put quite a bit of money, but they want to move it over to Hamilton now. And we will be responsible for that if that is part of this deal. And I don't really see it in here, but, I mean, I'm okay transferring it, but I just think everybody should understand, we, if it's part of that deal, we have to have maintenance on that too. Which is going to be a little bit because they have put a couple hundred thousand dollars into it. All righty.
My assumption was this is a space that we're already taking care of. I just didn't understand the transfer, so I don't know who takes care of the steps and of the hill. But I was thinking the berm, there's a lot of landscaping and things like that. So I just wanted to clarify it. I don't want to complicate this.
Maybe Jim Williams, is there, do we take care of those steps, like for plot, uh, snow removal or anything?
No, sir. So what you stated, sir, was, uh, I'll get to the mic. Um, it's the same thing that we've been discussing in our, uh, our leadership team meetings, that we will most likely have to take over the maintenance of those stairs and rails. I was unaware that they had just put, I guess, $200,000 investment.
I think that's what they were telling, I can find out for sure, but I know they put that in, you know, a lot, over the last five years, they put a lot of money into it. And they said originally it was supposed to be, I mean, this was prob, I'll have to go back on my notes on the TID, but it's probably five or six meetings ago, but I know that we've talked about it and it's been talked about a couple of times. But I know they put a couple hundred thousand dollars into it and they just, that was supposed to be transferred a long time ago to the City of Hamilton. And they've been taking care of it and now they want it off their books. And that's what I'm wondering, every bit of this is part of the stairs? It sounds like it is.
If, if, the, the way it was discussed previously with Alan, I believe in your right, but we need the map to confirm that.
Should we, should we table this?
Let me ask a question. We actually owned this originally, then we gave it to the TID, and now we're getting it back. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
So I mean, if everybody feels comfortable pulling back, I don't think there's, they're going to do the work on this, these lots between now and... If anyone wants to pull back and we get that question answered, we can table this?
I think I'd, I'd like to, you know, change it. I like, I'd make a motion to table it because, so that we could find out if this is part of it. And like I said, it's not going to hold up anything, is it? I don't want to hold up anything, but it's...
Can't imagine.
I think we need a little bit more detail because we're going to have, we're going to have expense. I mean, Jim's department's going to have expense in clearing off the stairs, which is going to have to be done, which is probably Butler County does it now.
And maintenance of the concrete itself.
Yeah.
Rails, handrails.
So, I mean, I think we all understood what was going to go on with that, but I think it needs to be a little bit more detail that it, is this going to be part of that deal? So...
Jim and Eric, can you get us a, a, a lot map or something like that? Will show us these lots?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm not sure if it's attached to our packet or not.
It is.
It is. It is. On page 523 of, uh, 521 of the packet.
Page 523?
Page 521. Start the map.
Mayor, if I may, I...
Please, go ahead.
The staff report does not mention the stairs that Councilman Pullman referenced. It's, uh, simply the staff report said that it was property that was transferred to the Butler County Transportation Improvement District during the 129 process. The, the land was being maintained by the City of Hamilton and they're just asking to convert it back. But there is absolutely no, I mean, I'm not saying it's not in there. There's no reference in the staff report whatsoever to the, the stairs, the railings, et cetera. It's simply just the, uh, the pieces of right of way. Um, and they broke it down into several different maps within the staff report showing what those areas are.
But it sounds like it's from the 129 city limits to Erie Boulevard.
Yes.
And so that, to me, I, I feel that they're picking up on those, those stairs are part of that deal. I mean, we just have to be aware that we're going to have maintenance on those. And you look at those stairs, there's a lot of concrete, a lot of rails.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, without really thinking about the stairs until I just heard you talk about it, it's nice, the first I've heard of it. I would not be in favor of taking that back from the Butler County TID, uh, just due to the ongoing maintenance cost of them.
Honestly, I think I'm looking at, at page of this, 520 something, I think it's, I think it's in there.
So I, I think we need to table it to, just to, just to investigate it further and if I need, um, well...
It's definitely...
Dan Corey will definitely could give me details on it and what, when they put that in.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd go off what the city manager was saying. I would like to know the costs that we're going to be incurring. That's going to stress out public works a little more. Um, it's going to cost us more money, so I just want to, just want to get the, what's the end game? If this were to go through, I, I just want to know what, when, if we receive this, what cost on our end are we going up? We're spreading out staff again. Uh, like to ask a little more questions, get a little more clarity.
And Jim, what about in your meetings, what do you guys think about it? I mean, are you...
We, um, uh, we have discussed it and, um, and of course, uh, we feel the same way. Uh, this is one more thing being added to our plate. Uh, but at the same time, if it's, if this is the transfer that we're going to make, we've got to be prepared to take on that responsibility. Because there's people that use those stairs for training and other activities, uh, that are citizens. And so, but, um, at the same time, uh, we haven't really kind of discerned exactly what the maintenance costs would be. Uh, but I believe we've had some discussions. And so, uh, let me circle up with Alan and Edwin, um, tomorrow. And I believe we can get you some of that initial...
And maybe we can go out and look at the condition of those stairs too, just to, but I know TID put some money into it. So it's probably got a long time. If we keep up on it, it may not be as much maintenance. And I guess that's what we need to figure out. I think put a lot of money into the, I know they said they put new rails and stuff like that. So I, I don't think they went out and did, uh, daily inspections to them and fixed little bits of it. But your team could go out and fix little areas, so it's not a big project. Is what, I, I'm not opposed to taking it back, but if, if they're in good shape now and we can maintain them at a lower cost by, you know, inspections throughout the year, it's not going to be that big of a deal, not like they had. So I just want to make everybody aware of it, that, that I think that's included.
There's at least three questions. Is it in there? I think it's in there. Number two, are we required to take it back because it came from us to begin with? Don't know. There could be an agreement somewhere floating around that we have to take it back. But if we don't have to take it back, be aware of what we're getting as a gift. we don't have to take it back, we're aware of what we're getting as a gift. And third, the cost. What's the cost to maintain something like that? So I think there's at least three questions, if not more. I mean, is there a motion that we can table this?
I'm going to make a motion to table it, but one comment too, I believe there is an agreement, from what I understand, and I, I can find that out and call you on it.
Are we required to take it back? Don't know.
I mean, that I think it was, that was the initial plan, but, because they had too much money in it, and so I guess that's what it was. But yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Is this a roll call vote or is this a voice vote?
Do a voice vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that number 12 is tabled. Okay, we go to new legislation, agenda item number 13, two reading of emergency ordinance involving payment to specific city employees.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule A of the, of the city's classification, of the classification, uh, excuse me, classification and compensation plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14th, 2022, relative to a lump sum payment to specific city employees and supplementing existing Schedule A as set forth in said ordinance, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule A of the classification and compensation plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14th, 2022, relative to a lump sum payment to specific city employees and supplementing existing Schedule A as set forth in said ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, Second by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion about this change to existing Schedule A? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number 14, two reading of emergency ordinance involving the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District.
An emergency ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement for the collection and administration of income taxes for the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District One by the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and declaring emergency, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Pullman, Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement for the collection and administration of income taxes for the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District One by the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and declaring emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Pullman, Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six zero.
And item number 15 is first reading of an ordinance involving, uh, amendment to Plan Hamilton, East Avenue Corridor.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, by adding the East Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan to the plan, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number 16, first reading of an ordinance amending our zoning ordinances.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, by amending section 1130, establishment of use districts and sub-districts, section 1250, zoning land use chart, permitted uses, conditional uses, accessory uses, section 1300, conditional uses and specific uses, section 1400, accessory uses, section 1800, residential design standards, section 1900, commercial design standards, section 2900, flood damage reduction, section 3500, mobile food service operation, section 3900, colossary, section 4000, administration enforcement, section 4100, Board of Zoning Appeals, section 4200, Board of Zoning Appeals Powers and Duties, and section 4500, fee schedule, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 17, first reading of an ordinance involving the home program funds.
An ordinance accepting appropriating and budgeting up to $517,887 for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, home investment partnership grant, home program funds, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number 18, which is the first reading of an ordinance involving our CDBG program funds.
An ordinance accepting appropriating and budgeting up to $1,625,998 for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, community development block grant, CDBG program funds, first reading.
You agenda item number 19 is a resolution involving some acquisition of certain real property.
A resolution authorizing and supporting the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission's OPWC, Clean Ohio Fund, Green Space Conservation Program, relative to the land acquisition for certain real property located east of Ohio, bypass four, south of Miami, Erie Canal, Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, 45011, parcel number
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Nab, Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number 20, which is a resolution involving appointing Councilmember Pullman to the Ross Hamilton Jed.
A resolution appointing Eric Pullman to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Ross Hamilton Joint Economic Development District One for the term commencing September 1st, 2023, and terminating August 31st, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We now go to agenda item number 21, which is a resolution involving our side lot program, 340 North Sixth Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the Land Bank to an adjoining property on our, as a side lot, 340 North Sixth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Pullman, Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions on this one or comments? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.